Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the first four meetings we're going to have. They're all four going to be here. We did have some agendas for all four meetings that are available over on the desk there. Bringing us to this point, there was a committee. And it's a large number of people, and I'm going to run down it quickly. Before I do that, let me say thank you to the Twin Oaks School staff, Professor Sue Miller, Board of Education, Mount Vernon, and Superintendent Bill Seager. They were all part of making this meeting possible and making it possible in this auditorium. Teresa B. Miller, County Commissioner. Teresa, I'm going to ask these people to stand there. They have all been part of the committee and the planning, some by meeting, some by email, some by telephone. Teresa B. Miller was County Commissioner. Rob Roarren is the City Law Director. I'm not sure if Rob is here. Chad Christopher, Mount Vernon Fire Chief. Tom Collier, County Commissioner. Tom will be handling Q and A a little bit later, as well as introduction of Dando Police Officers. Joel Daniel, Safety Service Director. Ashley Didinger of KSAT, Knox County Health Department. Doctor over there. John Francis, Second Ward City Councils on the committee. Rick LaNusa, Frederick County EMS Chief. Myself, Chip McConville, Knox County Prosecutor. Some are not here because this isn't their night, but they will be here following me. Scott McKnight, Mount Vernon Police Captain. Not here. Julie Miller, Health Commissioner. Roger Monroe, Mount Vernon Police Chief. David Breach, Chief Prohibition Officer, municipal court. And Jay Sheffer, Captain, Knox County Sheriff's Department. Judge John Thatcher, John C. Thatcher, municipal court, is not here tonight. William Cedar, Mount Vernon School Superintendent, don't think is here. Judge Jennifer Springer from Pro Bay, New York Court, don't think is here. Laura Webster, Operation Director, nine-month-long dispatch. And Judge Richard Wetzel, County Police Judge, is not here. Jeff Williams, Executive Director of Freedom Center. All these people will be here one of the four nights that they have been assigned. Also, I want to introduce Councilmember Nancy Vale and Susan Parr are here, aside from the two that are already in the prison here. And I think that's all of the people that have been involved in this project. There have been other meetings held. Oftentimes, the turnout is not what we'd like. This one is the beginning. And tonight, we think we're going to have the... Well, they're all going to be interesting. This one's covering a topic, drug awareness and the local drug culture. And to tell us about that, these gentlemen standing over here, they look like police detectives. That's exactly what they are. Detective Lieutenant Craig Feady of the Knox County Sheriff's Department. And then Detective Corporal J.T. Deschamps of the Mount Vernon Police Department. Gentlemen, Laura Jordan.
I would like to thank you for coming out tonight and seeing some new faces and knowing your faces. Before we get started, our little presentation, I've got a question. We're going to get to ask those questions later. How many people here have a family member or know a family member of somebody who's an infected virus? A few. How many have had opportunities to clean up, have gone clean for a while, and then relapsed and back in the game again? I mean, have had that opportunity? Is everybody here? Loud enough?
Use the mic.
Use the mic. I was trying to keep away from this one.
All right. A little bit about me, in 97, I started with law enforcement. The Frederick County Police Department, I was there for about two and a half years. From there, I was hired on the Mount Vernon Police Department. I was there almost 14 years. In 2006, I went back to the detective division. And throughout my entire career, my little niche, what I like to do is work drugs. So, in 2013, committed career change, went to the Knox County Sheriff's Office, where I'm now the Division Commander for the Detective Division. And still, our primary focus is drugs. So, I'm going to give J.T. a chance to explain his career here, and his one there.
I started with law enforcement, 1998, in Frederick Town as well. As you'll see, I had hot scotch behind Craig for years. Whatever he got into, I got into. Probably known each other 30 years, and you'll find out tonight, we feed off each other, finish a typical sentence, and it's almost clear. 12 years in Mount Vernon PD, I've been a detective, I've been up six years there. And just like Craig, I found that dealing with drugs was kind of my niche. I enjoy doing it sometimes. The way it runs out, you kind of got to watch and get yourself away from it. But now in my career, by being able to empower all of you to help us, that's less than I have to do. And I can be smarter instead of harder as well.
J.T. in?
Sorry, still here.
Here?
There you go.
Better?
Yeah.
Turn it up. We've done these in the past, and J.T. made a comment. And we're going to elaborate on that comment several times. And that is, this isn't a law enforcement problem, it's a community problem. And we're going to explain that as we go through, and some of the trials and tribulations as a result relates to law enforcement and the community. That being said, we're going to get into our presentation here. Hopefully, it's informative, hopefully, you'll see some stuff you haven't seen. Some of the trends that we're seeing, how dangerous the stuff is that we're dealing with. Which you're going to see in the presentation, just like marijuana. Mindset with the public and the communities, no big deal. Well, 1970s stuff, probably no big deal. Has changed now, and you're going to get a taste of what's changed and why it's still a serious issue. So, Knox County is unique because we have two drug task forces. We have the Central Ohio Drug Enforcement Task Force, we have the Metrich Task Force. I'll speak a little bit about the Central Ohio Drug Enforcement Task Force, we'll talk about the Metrich, and go from there. But as far as code, Central Ohio Drug Enforcement Task Force, they are five county task forces, which is Knox, Linn, the Skene Berry, and Shoppin'. When I say we're unique, normally you don't have two task forces. Probably five, six years ago, the Sheriff's Office broke away as we worked with Metrich, and went with Code Task Force, not because there was issues with the task force, just because of where we were seeing the dope come from. It was the southern areas, Columbus, Lincoln County, two big suppliers to Knox County. So, that's kind of the reason why they restructured and went Code Task Force. Mount Vernon chose to stay with the Metrich Drug Task Force. I'm going to let J.T. explain their task force.
Metrich is the 10th County Drug Task Force, largest decentralized drug task force in the state of Ohio. It started back in the early 80s when Ferguson County Sheriff's Office named the building Metrich Police to be working the same target. They found out right before they went to do a search for it, that they were both looking at the same thing. So, they decided, now's the time to do deep affliction and work together. And need the time to get, you know, the other counties to jump up for it. So, when Craig sent the helm at Code, and obviously, access officer to help for Knox County Metrich, we collectively decided that, why not all of them together? Now, we've got 15 counties, 15 council resources. We can borrow equipment, we can borrow bodies, manpower, and finances as well for our drug enforcement investigations.
Marijuana, to this day, is still one of the most lucrative drug trades out there. The money, the violence that goes with it, is still paramount. As I was stating earlier, we're not dealing with marijuana in the 70s anymore. Marijuana in the 70s roughly was about 68% THC, which is the active ingredient. Average today, 21%. Statistic that J.T. found the other day, take 17 and a half joints from marijuana from the 70s and equal one today. What you're seeing here is bubble hash. And you're going to see where it says dabs, down at the bottom. Some of you have probably heard the rest of that, weed, grass, pot, blood, marijuana, getting down the dabs, that's the new thing. They're heating that up, heating the glass or container up, and putting this wax on top of it that vaporizes. They suck it in, they get huge amounts of smoke, okay? The problem with this is, is that you're looking at 95% purity or greater THC content, okay? Versus your 6% or 8% used half. Causes psychosis, the edibles, you know, we'll kind of get into that a little bit. But the stuff that we're seeing, man, still had an issue with cancer. Man, edibles, a bunch of people overdosed. There was a college student, a little while back, that went and got a cookie. And the guy told him, eat a sixth of the cookie, wait a half hour. Don't eat the whole thing, because it's a slow-on thing. Waited a couple of minutes, and it's not doing anything. Eat some more, eat some more, next thing you know, he ate the whole cookie. Well, about a half hour later, he was running naked through the hall, jumped out the second story window, and it was death. Out of his mind. So, I know the mindset of community is marijuana, that's okay. Is it? Because I can take and show you in about 10 minutes how you can extract this and have that 95% or plus purity of it. Okay? There's, I know there's arguments about marijuana, I'm not talking about that, I'm talking about stuff that's also. There's your wax. Just take a dolver, put it in that little bowl that teed it up. It's kind of like a bong, and your standard bong is just, has it a little different. So, there's another picture of the dabs, the wax on the left and the butter on the right. Same difference, we're doing the same thing with it. This is some of the new stuff that we're seeing, that's very high in codes. Marijuana, ducks, hitting the street with the hags, in a coat, not as products and packs. THC levels 95% above, just what I said below, 17 and a half joints is one. There's just examples of indoor drugs that the task forces have had. Hydrogen pro. What you see, it's significant in that picture. Kids' toys, marijuana. There you go, there you see. Weapons, cash, money, still huge.
Hopefully, you can see the idea, but it's just marijuana.
Task force. All right, methamphetamine. This, by far, is one of our biggest issues that we're facing in Knox County right now. We started out early, late 90s, early 2000s, there was, we had some cooks in town, we hit some meth labs. They were what they call red P labs, red fosters. And you had to be somewhat knowledgeable to manufacture that with that process. They started, you know, they were seeing this rise across, usually, the trends come from west and east. They come from the west coast, come east. But we were seeing tremendous amounts of labs, and they were steadily increasing across the United States. So, that's when they started cracking down on the suit fed cells. Now, you have to have driver's license. You only have, I believe it's, I don't know, 30 days. Anyway, you can only have so much, and you can only buy so much in 30 days. And that's part of the reason why, is because of this meth production. As you can see, you got it different. I mean, it looks different on the left, bottom-left picture, with the star, like a pill price, we'll talk about those later. They're selling them as kids' candies, they can be anything. The shards up top on the right. When you see the pink, it just depends on how pure their manufacturing process is. A lot of times, with the suit fed, you see it has a pink coating, rather than washing it. So, they just left it in the mix, and that's why you're seeing that pink tint. Ice feet, crank, flax, meth, chalk, go. Go, shards, and Tina are what we're seeing here as the street terms for meth. Tina's new on the block. Those are most of what we see and what we hear. I heard another one the other day, I came across, Compton County reported a court decree. That's the only time I've heard it, it's been an isolated incident. Not really going to get into this with the other drugs, we won't. But vape laws, normal sleigh, you're going to see this stuff. But the point I want to get across on this is the second to the bottom, and the bottom, aggressive reviving behavior, and paranoia. With the onset of meth, we're seeing an increase of violence. They all think they have to have guns, and that's in our community. Okay? These people, their reality is different than ours, totally different. Double homicide we recently had may be attributed to impart in meth, the combination of bad cells, okay? They don't, they're, me talking like this, using my hands, to them, they have eye height, audio visual clarity. They perceive things as threats, and we don't perceive a threat, and they can attack anyone. So, law enforcement, when we're on the street dealing with these people, they can attest to it. You have to keep it guarded, you can't second guess them. After they've used so long, they stop getting that high, they're still trying to get that high. That dopamine release, the brain is slowed down, and it can't get that good feeling, you can't even bar, but no, happy now. They don't get that anymore, then they get paranoid. Looking out with us, thinking everybody's cops, it's crazy, some of the stories.
Sleeplessness is another major factor. It's obviously been up for three or four days at the time. After being alone meth, well, I know how I am, I'm cranky, I've been on sick for a couple of days. I'm not sleeping well, had that paranoia, getting into the drug world, that's what we deal with.
Mexicans have pretty much dominated the drug trade when it comes to the U.S. within the last several years. The heroin that we're going to talk about is a factor, and now they're really pushing the meth. We still have meth cooks. There's one pot method, and you're going to see some examples of that, you're going to get to see how volatile these cooks are. I can teach you in about 10 minutes how to cook meth, okay? 15. But they're buying everything between the pharmacy and the hardware store. You can get all the ingredients you need to make meth, it's very simple. Problem is, is that the aftermath, that the hazmat waste, that you're dealing with. Like we said, you're the eyes and ears of the community, and you have to know and educate yourself what you're potentially seeing or smelling. And with somebody that's cooking meth, there's great potential that you're going to be able to see, or at least smell, certain things. There's been several presentations that I've been out there, that said, have you ever smelled like a common campfire? Yeah, kind of sweet smell? Yeah, have you ever smelled like a hot carb out here, like sulfuric acid? Yeah. Well, those are all things that you're going to smell in a production lab, at least one box at the top. Unusual odors, ammonia, sulfuric acid gases, because there's ammonium nitrate for choosing this. You know, it just depends on what process, but the process that we normally see is in one box now. If you see large quantities of coke packets, they're, they don't have to be large quantities, they can do a couple of boxes and make meth. And I mean, just a box of suit fed body. They have the preference of what it is, each cook does, but you're going to see those lithium batteries cut open, because there's lithium metal that has to be in the cook. Use coffee fillers, if you see coffee fillers that have stains on them or white residue, that's a giveaway. Into containers of punchables, maybe you can see pictures of all of this. Dump tank, whatever it does, respiratory items, coke normally see, because they're not that smart.
The meth cooks have gotten kind of wise, the way we operate. They know we have a little trash bag from the burn, those around the trash, because that's what we're looking for, batteries fueled. Looking for blister packs from super fed. So, typically, they'll dump it, dump it from the car wash, gas station, out the windows, and driving along the road. We've had farmer's calls, they'll have large amounts of Powerade empty drink bottles. And we get there, and there's remnants of the meth production in those, which is, you know, very volatile. A little bit of water, one, magnesium strips, and then we've got fire.
Some of the things you may see. You have your lithium batteries, you have your blister packs. Down in the bottom-left corner, you see in the freezer, they have a jar. And you'll see like white solid at the bottom. And you see, now there's kind of a change, there's a layer there, that top layer is going to be methylol, they just haven't converted it yet. All your drugs, if you take, are HCI or HCL drugs, they're converted as salts. They have to use, salt it out in order for the body to accept the meth. That's some of the processes that I'm sure they're experiencing. Call the pipe, I mean, they can use light bulbs. They get pretty creative with what they smoke out of. Somebody's in here from the 60s and 70s, and they broke the pipe, used a smoke gun, I'm sure they've used toilet barrels as well. So, I mean, they get pretty creative with what they use to smoke their stuff. Anhyric ammonia, there's an anti-methan, they use anhyric instead of ammonium nitrate. These nurse tanks you see in the fields, a lot of times, you'll see a frost line there. Anhyric boils at 28 degrees below zero. So, most likely, you're going to see a frost line. What these guys do is they go and drill a hole inside of the tank. They flatten the tires, poke a hole in the tires, and they have a controlled output of that. Anhyric's coming from the side of that tank, so they got their little vessel or whatever they're using. And they're catching that anhyric, a lot of times, you see them cook right beside them. If you ever go past one of these tanks, and you see a bunch of dead grass, or you see a plume, stay away. Get away, follow us, and so we can assess that situation, because that might be just what happened, they just took. And we're starting to see, at least I've seen, farmers reverting back to using some of this. Bottom right, just some of the things you may see in these meth cooks. Propane cylinders, especially in the Nazi method with the anhyrics that I just showed you. They like to use those. Problem is, is that when you use anhyrics, you have to use stainless steel fittings, or it oxidizes it. So, if you go and you see the brass fitting on your tank, your tank laying out there, and it's all blue, that means there's likely a chance that it's had or has anhyric ammonia. Don't touch it, follow us. Top right corner is kind of hard to see, that valve's blue. See down where the other one blew up? Breathe this, it thicken flies your lungs, you're good. This is the one box that I was talking about. Most generally, we're going to see them in a Powerade bottle or a Gatorade bottle. They seem to favor the Powerades, because the bottle's a little thicker. But if you go along, you see that, you see solids, you can still see the dark spaces or dark areas in those bottles, I said lithium strips is in it. This is a previous meth cook. One on the left in the green bottle, that looks like just finished. They haven't taken the liquid out of it. Once it's done, that meth is suspended in that clear liquid that you're seeing. They have to extract that out and then convert it. The gas generators I was talking about, where you have to salt this meth out to make it crystallize, so you can use it, so the body can accept it. Most of the time, we're seeing a 22-ounce pot model, 20-ounce pot model. They take the cap, poke a hole in the cap, and they take this crayer tube, they stick down in it. They use rock salt, a little bit of sulfuric acid, makes the gas. That's what they use to salt this out, and form the crystals of the meth. And the end stages of the manufacturing process. That's after the fire. There's another fire. Shortly, when I start this video, you're going to see a little dark piece of metal fall. What's going to happen is that's going to hit water, lithium hates water. But you have to have water to start the meth though. You know, we're spending more time on this, but this is one of the most problematic drugs that we're dealing with. See that piece fall? Fortunately, the vessel ruptured. Very, when you're cooking meth, you have to constantly burp those containers, because they build pressure. This one didn't really have much on it, because it was controlled study. When you seen that drop down, that's exactly what happened, so we had a fire at Fallen Avenue, West Oak here, years back. This is a controlled cook as well. You're going to see what happened here. You can see the bottle expanding. Follow, we see the top is all gas. Give the cameraman, I'm ready for that one. You can imagine that in an apartment or a house, confined space, that whole room's totally involved in that. This is Tulsa Fire, doing their meth training. Guy gets a little careless, we'll see what happens. Fortunately, they're in their suits, so the two are at minor injuries. Keep in mind, those videos were all controlled tests. First, even I do these in their homes, not wearing protective gear, or not worried about you and your family living next door in the duplex. Not worried about you driving down the street, going to the back of your car. Those bottles can be in backpacks, if you drive down the street, if you have a house, it can be anyone.
Right, prescription drug abuse, I'm going to touch on this one bit here. A lot of our hair, one problem, started with the corporate prescribing of opioids. Here in America, we want to be pain-free. First thing you're asked at the doctor's office is, which pain? First thing you're asked at the doctor's office is, which pain is the one on a scale one to ten? I live with a little bit of pain every day. I live with a little bit of pain every day. I don't ever look again at zero, that's what our prescribers, you know, must be at. Now that, uh, that's kind of been tightened up, folks are looking to do other things. Right now, uh, some of the commonly used drugs, oxycodone, hydrocodone, Xanex, Suboxone, and I did say Suboxone, which is the anti-abuse. They're learning how to abuse that by mixing the two things, to do one recently, scapula and, uh, issue for nerve pain and anti-suture. They're obviously easy to obtain, um, because of the doctors dropping. Uh, folks will go to the doctor one day, for, for a pain dailment, you see a doctor two days later from the same pain ailment, not knowing the first doctor prescribed that, and they've got double pain meds. I love this addiction of these opiates, um, it says high cost over, over use. Uh, we've had folks tell us about taking twenty or thirty pills a day, just, just to stay well. We're not prescribed that, then you gotta give them someplace. So we have folks that, you know, that's, that's how they pay the rent. They get the opioids that they don't need anymore for aid, opioids, and they'll sell them typically, right now, the horn rate's about a dollar a gram, so a thirty grand per set, would cost you about thirty dollars. See how somewhat of a time that they would spend a day, it's three dollars for that. Easy to build a tolerance, um, get to where, just taking enough to get well. That increases, the more you, the more they take, um, they can't get that high anymore. Eighty-seven patients prescribed narcotics over ninety days, will be on narcotics by year for more. That's a national study, great to spend the day on a research show.
Cartels, they're in it for the money. It's business to them. So anywhere they can find an opportunity to make money, they're gonna do it. Unfortunately, today, what we're starting to run into, is they're counterfeiting these drugs, the oxycodone, the oxycodones, Xanax. They're using fentanyl, carfentanil, other synthetic drugs. Some probably heard of the pink drug, it's called U four seven seven zero zero, which is another synthetic, basically fentanyl, or carfentanil, hundreds and hundreds of times stronger than what the drug is, is found in the, in the real prescription drug. Typically, back until recently, the pill presses for these illicit drugs were outside the United States. It was only the pharmaceutical manufacturers that had these presses, so you find that solid pill, it's different shapes, colors, and imprints, that's coming from a pill press. Well, those are now in the United States. So, what they're doing now is they're counterfeiting the eighties, the thirties, the tens, the Xanax, and they're putting fentanyl, carfentanil in. So these people are taking it, thinking they're getting the regular prescription drugs, and next thing you know, they're in an overdose situation, or dying, because that's what this is. The other problem with this is, with the fentanyl's that we're dealing with, is that those absorb through the skin, very, very easily. Um, if you breathe, it microgram, shut it down, dead. Shut the central nervous system down, die. Um, so, they're getting in, I don't know how many of these finished pill bottles, and you dump them out, and you see all that powder, you know, if the pills are out and around in there, and you have, well, if you touch that in this, in this situation, good chance you're gonna overdose. Follow-up to the prescription drugs he was just talking about, heroin. Why do you think they went to heroin? Cheaper, right? So, our borders started getting flooded with heroin, they saw another opportunity to make money. It was in the seventies, went away, comes back in the sixties? Heroin comes in all different types and forms, and I didn't put them all on here, we didn't do, so we can go on and on and on and on. Um, different colors, we got what we call black tar heroin, this looks like tar. Kind of fitting DOA for the top one. And some of the street slang for it, boy tar gravel and berries, or, our most common terms that we see around here. Do you believe prescription pills, longer lasting, better high? Immune to it, need more. People may look fine, they may function, they're just doing enough to stay well. Some of these people, you can't tell. They're gonna dry out, get extremely sick, they don't like that, and as part of the, it comes to recovery process, one of the things that they don't like is that they know they're gonna go through hell for several days, because, and, and that depends largely on the amount of use, and their tolerance.
That's been one of our obstacles, where folks have come to us, and who've done investigations on, that know that we know about them, and what they're doing, and they finally make that choice to come to us and say, hey, I want help. We're always there to give that help, and it's not all about putting them in jail, but it's that sickness that they know they'll have for three or four days, they absolutely can't turn away from, they've gotta use just to be well.
Constantly looking at techniques in different ways to seal up the law enforcement. So, this was an individual that we caught a while back, has just recently been caught again, but he died, he was pretty slim, slick, and so I got a search warrant for his vehicle. So that's a double money fruit pan, it's a pulse plug, he got meth and heroin inside a can, right? Took that picture in, into jail, and I slid in front of him, and you just, you just see him melt, it was awesome. So, he gets out, on bond, we were utilizing a confidential informant in this case, confidential informant hits me up, says, hey, he's hitting me up again, alright, let's do it. Well, he's feeling a little bit different this time, he's got a little metal box to the background, he's putting up underneath him. And he's got a gun, okay? So, we can even deal with him. So that's what we had on the second time. This was, it's a little bit older now. Uh, this guy here, you can see, this was an overdose, we had, a, a death overdose, still having the syringe in his other hand, it was that quick. When we checked his vehicle, because he'd gone down to rehab, his, his family that he was living with, thought he was doing great, we go out in the vehicle, and here's a figure, and then he was using to try to pass his, his screens with whoever was super brother. Fentanyl we're talking about. Lethal doses in each one of those. So you can see the heroin, and the fentanyl, and the carfentanil. And that's what you're looking at, is lethal dose. And that's for a user. Carfentanil is generally engineered towards large animals, chemists from China, and a couple other countries. This is middle of the road. This isn't even the bad stuff, yet, they can manufacture, and it's bad.
Dealers are using fentanyl to cut the heroin, when you go a little farther, you get a little more pain from the drug, so to speak. They obviously don't venture that, uh, like pharmaceutical companies do, you don't know what you're gonna get. You've actually purchased heroin, sent it off to the lab, and expecting to get back results saying x amount of grams of heroin, there's more fentanyl, and then there's heroin, so that's how they're reporting it to us.
There again, cartel's looking to make money, fentanyl's are cheap, Chinese are selling it cheap, projections are that heroin in the near future is gonna be all fentanyl, and none of the poppies we've been ordered to see. Carfentanil ten thousand times more potent than morphine. Those two drugs that we just talked about, the heroin and the methamphetamine, carfentanil and the fentanyl's that we're seeing combined with that, is what we're dealing with here. Our last several overdoses that we've had, fatalities, have come back with either fentanyl or carfentanil in.
Well, we've had to actually change the way we do our current testing, we just have field test kits, and we take a little bit of the drug, a little bit of the test kit, and break the labels, and get the color you want, to tell them, you know, what kind of drug it is. For tell us now, if it's powdered heroin, the chances of it having fentanyl, we can untest it. It's providing field testing, so, percent rate, a lot of field, a little bit under hoods, masks, it's all gloves. Crack the cocaine. Crack is back. From the eighties, it's back. We're seeing a, an increase in cocaine, price has a lot to do with that. The street names for coke, those candies, soft, blow, hard, white, cookies, ball, playing rock and girl. If you remember, we said, boy goes heroin, rolls cocaine. Signs of use, increased heart and respiratory rates, a lot of heart issues, should use some cocaine, and send them right into cardiac arrest. Natalated pupils, decreased appetite, but not under any more. Uh, they get the fix, and that's all we're about, we're getting high. Uh, heroin ammonia, argumentative behavior, lost coordination, most in a drunken state. Uh, the drugs that we've seen, uh, these are, are hidden in, I'm sure you're also familiar with, uh, some of these, uh, bath salts, spice, um, spice is a synthetic type marijuana. We had a little business, let's push that, it's quite a little while to get that done, and we did. With that, we're having folks hallucinating, not knowing where they were at, where they were. They're just as dangerous as, as the other drugs were supposed to be. Uh, halogens, paint, dust off, glue, uh, driving right down to Shockville Avenue, several months ago, a guy huffing dust off. It's a quick high, doesn't last as long, you're still going, it's cheap and it's easy to get. A lot of the times you see in the model car sections and such, in the stores, gotta be eighteen by glue, that's the reason why. DMX triple C, or your cold medicines, um, they use the term robo-ing, a little get two or three bottles, smoke it, dust it, and juggle it, isn't that short of high? Paper cigarettes, synthetic oils, Greg does a little bit more about that, THC pens.
Go back to the DMX triple C a little bit, few years back, we had a, uh, pursuit of an individual, uh, Officer Lishness, I don't know if he's gonna be here tonight, but that individual, during that pursuit, Lishness was trying to deploy stop sticks, the guy saw him, threw it right off, hit him, flipped him over the car, that guy was laid out on a quarter seat, he was, and several packages blister packs, he was just down that, and out of his body. Paper cigarettes, fake pens, uh, all these fake chops and stuff, the oils, everybody's familiar with those now, we're seeing more and more, see bars, put them to smoke, they come out. Well, the extraction process that they're using, when we go back to talking to, about the tapes, THC, marijuana, they're putting that in oils, and with this extraction process, it takes the smell away, so I could be smoking marijuana right next to you, THC, you never know, you won't smell it. So, that started posing issue with our youth. Finding this out, and, you know, that's relatively hard for us to detect, we just have to, if we see it, depending on the situation, we're gonna take it, test it, and see what's going on. This is huge, drug versus crime. This is kind of where we're at, and this is why it's so important, important when we talk about the community. Quite frankly, just being honest, I get tired of hearing about law enforcement being blamed all the time when it comes to the drugs. Why aren't you doing some? But we are, but we can't do it all. So, we have to go to the community, the community has to get involved in, in this effort. Just kind of a rundown, you have your user. That user has to pay for those drugs. How do you think he's doing that? Breaking into your car? Stealing, robberies, burglaries, B and Es, retail theft, ID theft, stealing from Walmart, all them all the time, their shrinkers goes up, what do you think that does to the price? Okay? So these guys go out, and they steal from you, what's your reprieve? You have insurance, right? So you go, maybe you turn that into insurance. So you file all these claims, now the insurance company starts to evaluate Knox County, and say, what's going on in Knox County? And it's crime rate soaring. Well, guess what happens? The premiums go up, right? What happens when premiums go up? Proper guy, you start going down, everything starts to deteriorate, that's why it's important to get the calls. We wanna come to the community and ask for your help, we have to. You live there, you know what's going on, you know if it, you know, if it's normal, if it's not, we don't know that. The problem for us is, if we go out and we ask for your help, and then you call in, give us the information we requested, and then you don't see some type of action right off the rip, you get frustrated, which creates more animosity towards us. Believe me, we're not saying that your situation is any less important than any others, it's not about that. We have to prioritize, prioritize what we got. Know that that information that you're giving us, may be that missing link that we've got, we don't have, that gets us into somewhere else, or gets us to search warrant, so we can take that, sec that. It does us no good to keep going after the street level users, if we don't get the dealers. So our goal is always to move up that food chain. We have to have your help, Peter. Know your area, you know what's normal, increased foot traffic, hidden traffic, short-term traffic, to residents, bicycles, huge now. See them all running around, midnight, one o'clock, four o'clock in the morning, they got their backpack on, and bicycle, well, that's one of those transportation we're utilizing, because it poses different issues for law enforcement, okay? So if you start seeing that, they're rolling up to the house, they're there for a couple minutes, they leave, pretty good chance, something's not going on, or there's something going on. Truck drivers down here on the ground, you're gonna find it, there, can't tell you how many complaints you've had, parks, neighbors. Now, when you start seeing that, you know you've got an issue. See the activity? Plate numbers, you can get plate numbers, okay? Um, descriptions, date of month, time of day, we don't have the resources to go out and just sit on each complaint they get, okay? So the more information that you can give us, the better off it is for us, we start putting that together. Well, we know it's this time of the month, this time of the week, this time of the day, okay, we can go out, sit during that time, and, and focus our efforts, and utilize our resources the best way we can. This is code, this isn't metrics, this is just our flat townies. The reason why I put this on here, is I just wanted you to see kind of the graph of what we're dealing with. Marijuana's still present, or prevalent, but look at the heroin and the meth. We are unique, for some reason, you go to Columbus, they don't really hear about meth. They hit it every now and again, like, you got meth, huh? Hell, we got meth. Step down Lincoln County, Lincoln County's inundated with it, we're in for it.
Uh, two ways to report, they're real easy for you. Non-answered numbers, gives the voicemail, so you don't have to worry about feeling like you're talking to somebody, not gonna pressure you for your name, we just want your information. Feel free to leave your name, we will follow up the call. I'm not just gonna share a thought, some of the slide, PD and all those things there, write this down, there are some magazines over there, of the district department's company. That call you make, maybe that is the puzzle we need.
Even if you do leave your name and number, we'll call you back, and, and get information from you, it's our goal to protect that person. So, we get that information, we try to substantiate that information in different ways, so we never have to involve that person. So, we get that information, we try to substantiate that information in different ways, so we never have to involve that person, and that's what we're trying to do. All right?
It doesn't do us anything different, yeah? We're not gonna go into drug laws and say, hey, your neighbor just called and said, you know, you got traffic, nah, it's not how it works, we're smarter than that. Do you know if you wanna scare them with what we've talked about tonight? If it did scare you, good, because now you know it's a reality here, not running Knox County.
I'll just leave you with one last thing, something about, sometimes we go out there, we know, at least people know what's going on, they're afraid to come forward and say, I don't wanna get involved because I'm afraid of repercussions. My answer to that is, is okay, you live in this neighborhood, the dealer's next to you, okay? And that dealer has a dealer, he's getting his dope from somewhere, or she's getting her dope from somewhere. So let's say, for some reason, he ticked them off, he didn't pay, he got in front of the dope. Paying, now that dealer's ticked off, that dealer's gonna come up and send a message. So he drives by and taps two grams off the house, now he goes to the window, goes to the other window, goes in your house, killed your son or daughter. Wouldn't you wanna get involved? Would you rather take the rest of it, report it, and say, hey, I've got this, or do you wanna wait to see if something blows up, and then somebody really gets it? So that's kind of my counter to them saying, I don't wanna get involved, afraid to get involved, I don't want repercussions. We just told you, we'll do everything we can in our power to try to keep you out of that loop. Okay, but, community has to get involved, there's other things that we can do, um, we can talk about later, it's gonna be established. Just put pressure on them, know that you're watching them, nah, I know what's going on, we're watching you, we're gonna move around, like the show about Cali, we're still up here. So, and, folks, I appreciate you guys taking the time to listen, turn it back over to Chicago here.
Thank you, at this time, uh, my job was to introduce Navin officers and two K nine units, ironically, they're on active call. Both officers and both units are actually actively part of the stop right now. So, they won't be with us, we are gonna try to get them here Thursday night, uh, for that portion. But we'll move on to the question and answer period, uh, we wanna allow everybody an opportunity to ask a question if they have it. We would ask you that you keep the questions relevant to tonight's presentation, because there are other presentations that will happen over the next several weeks. And we wanna ask the specific questions to those individuals, so, um, at this time, if you're ready, I will, I'll have, I'll actually give you, so you both have a microphone, answer that.
How many people are involved?
How many people are involved in the, in this task force? Are you talking throughout all the counties, or just part of here?
We're going to be working pink, we got it.
We usually have roughly twenty, twenty-five, and they have a delivery meeting, and those are agents that are assigned with the task forces. So, that's code. Yeah, metrics is a little different.
Not Everett County has dedicated drug officers. Um, here in Malibu, we've got four detectives that work there that work with drugs. So we also work every other case load too, um, park crews, that's, that's all that, so.
Guess a better answer to your question? We have all these task force members, we have an analyst from the military as well, and he helps us and gives our support. But, crime travels across lines, and with the drugs and stuff, so we're constantly in contact with, with other agencies and task forces. Uh, state, federal level, county levels, you name it, constantly working with, all the partner with them to, to actually get the end result, that's to get the bad guys and build off the street. So, it's kind of hard to put a number to it, but if we get something big and we gotta pull in resources, we're gonna pull from them. That's that, we get kind of a, it's a give and take with counties, you know, those sick guys in other counties, if they need something to round up their investigations, if we need that, we'll send that to you. Another question over here.
Uh, K nine units that are so effective in drug detection and all, does Mount Vernon have any plans for K nine?
Yes, we actually do, uh, I think they're gonna talk about that a little bit Thursday night, um, arms of an ancient foundation, get the bones in there in the back. Spirit and campaign help raise funds for K nine.
Yeah, do you have any, uh, estimate, or what fraction of the drug traffic in the county, or are there, do you think it's half, ten percent, or one percent?
I don't know if I can put a number for that. The, our trend that we saw real quick was, back in, when this first started, heroin started coming on, you would see the street level users going to Columbus, big cities to pick up heroin, get two grams, bring a gram back, sell the other grams, of course they're happy. Now, the whole thing is, is that the big cities are so saturated with dealers and dope, they can't make money. So, they're branched out, and they're also going into, to foreign protection as well. So, a berry of heroin is a ten gram of heroin, so you got ten, ten tenths in a gram, you're selling berry, up here, you're looking at a berry, it's about twenty, twenty-five bucks, in Columbus, it's sixty bucks. So it's a business decision for them as well to come up here. Normally what we see is these dealers will take, they'll throw some dope to somebody that lives in a residence, trap it out of their house, I mean, trap and sell out the house. And they'll stay for a while, and they'll bounce around, they'll split. So it makes detection harder for us, but, you know, there's certain elements that we have to meet. When, when you call in and give us information, some people think just that information's enough to, for us to just go there and shut that place down. That's not the case, there's, there's criminal elements, elements of all, we have to meet. So, that takes time, sometimes it's faster than others, other times it's, it's, you know, a step process. So, um, that's kind of the trend that we're seeing with these other dealers. Now we have one of these here trying to, to, you know, get their own game and become one, the king of this world.
I don't wanna put you on the spot, your bosses are here, commissioners are here, the mayor's here, but both of you in the perfect scenario to do the job that you need to do. What tools, what manpower, what do you need to do? Because the other people that are in here are the citizens that will help pay that bill, how can we get this done? So Knox County and Mount Vernon is known as, we can't go there.
It's funny then to ask that, because the mayor and I just had this discussion the other day. Um, quite honestly, when it comes to Knox County, we've never gotten it right, but we've never had the issues that we've had now. You know, it's kind of, well, you know, it's always, well, they're, it's kind of a better community, we don't have that long here. Guess what? It's in our face now. So, problem for us is, is, there's a lot of problems. Starts from the federal government down. Um, you know, there's budget crunches, uh, they cut monies to task forces, to departments that we utilize, for drug enforcement efforts and other things, education, stuff like that, has been cut out. Now, the trend's treatment, so they have the CARE Act, Rob Portman was one of the ones that was instrumental in this CARE Act, which is what a lot of our facilities here, treatment facilities, they get punched in that, it's giving down to the states. Um, the problem with that is, is that's all treatment, you're treating simply. Unless we have enforcement, we reduce that exposure, we're never gonna get ahead of that game. They got more people, you ask people that, uh, that work in, with behavioral health, with the Freedom Center, ask them about the, the, uh, the case load they've got, they don't, they're tapped out, they don't have the resources to properly handle it, everybody, do the best they can. But you have too much exposure, we reduce that exposure, you have to have that balance. There's never been a balance, the federal government on that, has to be a balance. Um, for us to properly attack that, obviously, resources, having dogs in place, uh, full-time agents. I mean, this is our problem, this is what causes eighty-five, ninety percent.
Community involvement.
Yep, community involvement, it's like we were talking earlier, you have to give us the information, um, and get involved. Like I said, there's other things than us just going out and kicking in doors that we can do, pressure on these people to make a move. But, that all comes through an educational training process, but, you know, that's all the stuff that we need to properly handle what we've got. Obviously, that all costs money, and that's bad.
One of the easiest ways to gather tip of information is with the cell phone. Take a picture of the license plate, where's the site, the phone number, that I can forward that to?
You call one of these tip lines, or see if you can, I'll give you.
It's on my cell phone, I need to send it to you, how do I send it?
You call that tip line, or I'll give you my business card tonight, I'll give you the number of cell phone number, and you get those, you send them to me, because you aren't the only one to do that. That's simple.
But why don't you just put the number out there?
Oh, that's a landline.
I understand that.
Hey, if you're looking, if you just wanna email pictures, is that what you're talking about doing? Basically, you have a photo, you wanna email it to somebody, and I'm not, you can tell me, PD's the same way, we're not just gonna share it on this website. The detective division has all the detective emails listed right on that website, so you can email right there, and she probably has information as far as the PD.
Exactly, we don't have a cell service yet that you could just randomly send something to, like we do tip lines, so we have to go through the email service right now. But believe it or not, there are entities out there that are accidentally working on emergency services that uses the cell phone services. We just do not have access to them now, but, uh, it's future, has anybody seen the show, uh, APB? Uh, anyway, that's exactly what they're using, the cell service to get access, uh, from the citizens so they can immediately send this stuff in. We're not there yet, but we are working towards that, and, but right now, we have to go through the email system, which almost every cell phone can send an email, and, uh, then once you get contacted with the detectives, uh, at least in our department, I'm pretty sure in the sheriff's department, they have access to business cell phones, that they will accept, uh, personal information from, uh, callers.
I guess the other thing is, don't feel obligated that I have something in the city, I can't talk to a county detective, or they're not sharing. If you live in the city and you happen to see one of our detectives, they're talking on a daily basis. Same thing, you live in the county, but you know JT, or you know one of the other detectives, or you forward information, or for whatever reason, you leave it on the PD's line, don't think that it's gonna get lost and not forwarded. These guys are talking every day, especially if they have information.
Road officers too, you just know patrolmen out there, we transfer information up, down, sideways, and laterally. So, don't think that the information does get passed along.
Question over here.
So as far as rights, too, pictures are helpful, or, or, um, documentation of traffic?
Pictures are worth a thousand words, so, I mean, if you have, if you can give us a little description, you know, if you snap a picture, you send an email, and fill us in on what that is, where's it at, what time of night, day, whatever, yeah, I mean, it's likely that we're probably gonna know that person's on that. A lot of times, yes, um, you know, sometimes they're just bouncing from house to house, wherever they can find a place to stay that night.
Another question on this side.
I, I know that they're teaching the public how to handle somebody who's overdosed, you know, they're teaching kids now how to, how to put that syringe or whatever. My question is this, if one little micron of this stuff can cause someone to overdose, is it best to not get involved in that when you see somebody and just call somebody now? Because that's my fear, I've been, I've encountered, I travel a lot, I've encountered a couple of people in their cars, their rental cars, they're the side of the road, and they're clearly, and it, what, is it best now for the public to not touch those people? I mean, honestly, if you, if just, if just a powder can cause you to, I, that, that's my question.
That's kind of a catch twenty-two question, uh, recently, I just went to a training, uh, BCI was there, they were at the DEA conference or training, and they were discussing that exact issue, okay, well, you know, they're saying, law enforcement, send it off, don't mess with them. Well, you still have first responders that are going in the house and, and getting in contact with these people all the time. How many of those first responders have we seen that have actually been exposed where at the point where they feel effects? It's very, um, if you're in a confined area, uh, you, the biggest thing that you wanna do, I would say, is on your approach, before you get on, start looking around. You know, if you start seeing toddlers laying out or whatever, obviously, you know, let, let the first responders take care of that, let them know too, because, you know, there are certain things that they need to do, um, gloves, respirators, things like that, but, I mean, that's kind of a catch twenty-two. I'm not gonna go out there and tell you not to treat one of these people, the chances, I would say, are slim, that, that would happen. Could it happen? It could happen, um, because they fall out so fast, so that's gonna be just a decision that you're gonna have to make in that specific circumstance.
I have a question, on your power point, you said that Oxytoto, Oxytocin, and Propestol were easy to get. For me, I have to go to my doctor, and he has to find a reason to give me that, so maybe you can explain, how is that easy to get?
I have the same problem myself, I had knee surgery, and I didn't want one until it was three days afterwards, and I said, yeah, I could have had a propestol. But, I, 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 I didn't wish me.
All right, Mayor, uh, I appreciate the question, but we're not gonna answer that, okay? Uh, because we're not gonna put that kind of information out without, uh, to access the activity to get the drugs. Just know that that is, not the shopping industry's way to get the information, so.
Another question over here.
My question is, uh, with the youth of the county now, I see a rise of underage people with the drugs. Like, I got kids telling me all the time, escape zone, kids are selling drugs at the escape zone, like, what's going on with the?
If you're coming, it'd be easier to hear probably presentations from KSAT and other things, and training, uh, that they're trying to get out there, uh, hidden in plain sight, with their version of that, um, educating parents. It's, that is, quite frankly, uh, an area that we were trying to improve on. Their program was, was, uh, I forget, and that was taken away, oh eight, oh nine. That was more effective than what people believed it to be. They're starting to put SROs, resource officers, back in the schools, so, um, that is an area that is so accepted now. It's just, the, the dynamics of what we're dealing with are just crazy. You know, I'd be afraid to death to try that, with these kids out there, a lot of them just, yeah, but that did it, mom did it, that's probably, we're trying to break the cycle now, because we're going through, you know, second, third generation, that's all we know, we're still alive. So, I mean, those are some of the issues, if it gets so complex, I'm sitting up here for, staying up here for quite a while, just trying to give you those demographics of what we see, but, obviously, I can't do that, but, that is an area that we're trying to improve on through education, and an area that, that we're targeting as far as.
All right, um, my question is, and I don't wanna get into the topic that maybe I'm gonna get into more later, so, you didn't mention it, and, um, what's happening as far as the doctors, the area, because, you know, I know from various places that there's a couple doctors in the county that have been over prescribing for an ongoing length of time, and, uh, you know, I mean, there's obviously a percentage of that that's really contributing to the problem, but where is that going? Like, what's happening on that?
Several years back, there was a couple doctors that did the exact same thing, but it was a money game with them, and we were able to shut them down. When it comes to doctors and prescribing habits, you would think there would be some, pretty. When it comes to doctors and prescribing habits, you would think there would be some pretty hard guidelines out there. They have to put some regulations down as far as pill mills and, and you know, how much they prescribe or how many pills or whatever. But still, that's largely left to their discretion. So that is very, very tough for us to deal with. Yeah, we have a system that's called ORS. It's a high automated RX reporting system. And the doctors, pharmacies are mandated to report to that. So one of the things that we can do now is we can go on, if we get a complaint about maybe an individual's doctor shopping, we can go run an ORS on that person and see, you know, what kind of prescription drugs, controlled drugs they're getting. If they're doctor shopping, if they're overblown prescriptions. Doctors can be held accountable. You can see their prescribing habits and things like that. I had a real eye opener, Springfield. We did an investigation, we had an informant here that this doctor happened, used to be in Knox County in Springfield, was down there. You know, they've had some issues, looked out, out in that area. But we went to that medical board and it was valid. Like you're kidding, they can, they can prescribe all this and that's okay. So that's, that is very tough for us to, we can go.
Something in place now for case that they're trying to do something with the doctors, hold them responsible? Are there things that are?
That's what, that was part of the pill mill. I don't have all the particulars of that, but they're trying to crack down on prescribing habits of doctors when it comes to it.
Couple things. One thing that really concerns me is that I'm getting the feeling, talking to people from outside Knox County, that Knox County is a headquarters now. I mean, a few years ago, council meetings, we would talk about Newark, we would talk about Marion. And now it seems like people in the state and surrounding counties are talking about Mount Vernon. And I think that that's, I mean, I guess my first question is, are you seeing that too? That people are thinking, oh, wow, it's not Marion necessarily or Newark or the words of Mount Vernon?
We are, unfortunately, yes. BCI agent that I was talking to at this training says, he's down, he's been working down around Fairfield, hockey, that area. And they're hearing about him. So keep hearing about him. Yeah, we knew, to go back and kind of support the statement I made earlier, these people ratchet out, dealers ratchet out. They're trying to go over the, you know, don't fear detection, things like that. This is an evolving process here. It's the man hours, the amount of man hours, the amount of stress it puts on us in these investigations is tremendous. Like you said, burnout. You have to really control that. And believe me, we get just as frustrated as the public does with dealing with some of these people. It seems like we'll hit them and then six months later, they're right back doing the same thing. So.
Obviously, you need us to help. And I guess the second question I had, or last night at the council meeting, John Francis was talking about bicycles. And never, it never occurred to me that, I guess I just ride bicycles like late at night, early in the morning. And I just, it never occurred to me that this was a major transport of drugs until you. But I mean, I know, and it's never struck me before until John said that last night. Oh, my gosh, wow. I mean, you need to be watching that. Are there, and you know, and John, you talked about how there's legislation that are in the books about people need to have their bicycles registered, which I don't, I'm conservative myself. But is there anything that you can do, can you stop people that you suspect that are riding a bicycle?
We haven't been.
You haven't, okay, so that's something you're doing. Are there other kinds of things like that, that, that maybe are things that, that we should be watching out for? That is something that's, that I never thought of or maybe some of the other people here haven't thought of?
Well, all, all the reporting we're talking about that we want to hear is, you know, you probably grocery shop in the same place every time. A lot of people can say for a grocery shop. Maybe you go two, two, three evenings a week and the same car is always parked in that same spot. They're out by the road and the sheriff walking back and forth to your car, two or three cars stop, five minutes, less than five minutes. You see maybe a hand, those are things we need to report to.
Question over here. It's not just neighborhoods, it's every area. When you talk about stopping people, we still have to have a reason for that stop. So we have to have some probable cause to make that stop to continue.
Yeah, I'd like to, first of all, thank you gentlemen for coming out tonight. It's been very helpful to hear from you and get ourselves educated. Susan just touched on a topic that I wanted to bring up tonight, and that has to do with bicycles. And you talked about, so. I did no research because where I live, I live in a house you've watched in downtown. And we have a drug house probably five houses away from where I live. In fact, so we have called the police many, many times. Every time they come out, they said, yes, we're aware, we're trying to help you. But we have probable cause to pull these people over. And I understand that, and I know you have a big job, a big task to do. But I did some research and found that there are compact city ordinances against bicycle riders, or bicycles. Number one, they have to have at nighttime, it's the sunset, the sunrise, a lamp that beams out 500 feet. If they don't have that, you can pull them over for a misdemeanor. That's what's happening. If you have that probable cause to pull these people over. Another thing, another law for ordinance is, I'll just get to a big one here. They have to register their bicycle with the chief of police reporting to our city ordinance. They cannot ride a bicycle without registering their bike and having a license on their bike. So if we have these laws in place, we need to, we need to utilize them to our benefit to get these people out of our streets and out of our community. And we have to hassle them, we have to give them, let them know that they're not wanted here. We have to cause problems for them. And we have the laws in place, we just need to enforce them.
And we've actually made traffic stops for patrol units, though like at night, that's one. Riding on the sidewalk in downtown business districts is another.
There's one other thing.
They've had the Danville dog actually come in and do a sniff of the bicycle and found dope.
There's one other thing, if you do pull them over for any of these misdemeanors, you can impound their bicycle.
Thirdly.
And that is in our city codes.
Other question over here.
On the K9, you didn't get to be here tonight. Can you tell us the advantage of having a K9? And can we give somebody money tonight? Because I'm not sure if I'll be answered.
Uh, there certainly is an advantage. K9, quick sniffing K9 is another tool on our bill that we can use. A dog's trained obviously for narcotics. Whether they're there now or just were, we may not find it. But that dog indicates, only that gives us cause, you know, probable cause to search that vehicle. And we're getting a lot of dope with the dogs in that. We also have an addiction officer, Jesse Butler. She marries her, her hours. She's really got it down pat where a lot of these drug houses are and, you know, what the commonplace is for that neighborhood. And she's another tool that we have at the police department. She's out of call rotation and that's all she's concerned about is drug trafficking.
I know we're trying to sound scheduled, we've got three or four more people with questions. I do want to mention that there's a flyer on the KSAT table about how I'm worried you're making a donation even tonight for that, for his. I just want to real quick say, I know what you're saying. Trying to develop probable cause, make it a stop. It's just like a vehicle though, if we don't have something that's in plain sight, plain smell like dope, marijuana, we can't just search them. We can't just search them back and back. We have to have a reason to do that. So that's what poses the problem. That's why a dog is so important. But also time on how quickly after you got the dope. We can't wait, you know, 45 minutes to get a dog there. They have to be there during the course of a normal traffic stop unless we have a reason to extend that traffic stop.
I asked this question last month, it was the city hall about the education. Concerning DARE, which we have, I think the sheriff's office has the DARE program. I don't know if it was because of the funding, wasn't still available. There's a program that people said that was very effective, not effective at all. It's a nationwide program that everybody knows about in the area through tall program. I don't know if it was an action program, it was a matter of funding. The sheriff brings it out or the sheriff's one to us.
Initially, yes, it was. Initially, it was a funding issue with budget cutbacks in '08, '09. We directed those guys into patrol bureau, patrol officers. I think the latest thing that we're looking at probably that we may want to institute as far as beginning of next school year would be the SRO or the school resource officer. I know there is some specific funding that will address some of those issues. And I, I think that is going to be our approach to get an officer in the schools for the drug education portion or that matter. But also just that building a relationship and that officer's ability to interact with those students. So that is one of the things that is on our upcoming agenda, hopefully to get squared away for next year.
Another question.
So I want to thank you guys very much for your part to keep in our county safe. My question would be, do you guys do checks on the schools? And if so, like are you finding certain drugs in the school more than others, even like in maybe elementary, middle schools?
Yeah, typically just about every school in the county gets a check. It's usually instrumental or instrumented by the school resource officers, the school administration. Marijuana is probably the most prevalent that we're finding. Not a lot of it, but we are hearing other, you know, harder drugs in schools.
What about infiltration into the drug market? Are you doing anything or is there hope that even you could trade off with some of the other counties so people wouldn't be recognized, but to infiltrate and make the drug policy so that you can arrest? And then what about the, the company criminality of trafficking and prostitution that companies all have?
When it comes to using undercover agents, there, there are some advantages and there's disadvantages. Back in the early 2000s, there was a joint investigation with Frederick Town Police Department, not under the BCI. It took them approximately two years to get 24 defendants. That entire time, we have all these people complaining, it must be enough, it must be enough, I can't say anything. So, you know, to use professional paid informants to do that is a time consuming process. You have to, they have to come into the community, they have to get them a job, a place to stay. And then they've got to wiggle their way into these, these cells. It takes forever. One of the tools that we utilize the most is confidential performance. This guy got picked up for, let's say, a five possession, felony five possession. Well, you got to give us two people, if they meet the criteria, they're not eliminated from certain standards that we have, then we're going to flip those people. The prosecutor has to give us the, okay to do that, utilize them. It's, it's a headache sometimes, but that's the only way that we're going to do it, we're going to do it quicker. Using other officers, we do do undercover and introduce undercovers at times. It just depends on the circumstances, but that's not very prevalent.
Question, Mayor. And you've mentioned how these people tend to move around. My impression is they move between a fairly small group of properties. Is there things we can do to, I won't say eliminate the properties, but it's, at least in my neighborhood, you know, if you ask me to identify a half dozen, it wouldn't take me long to say, well, go here, here, here and here.
One thing, and that's actually started with the Knox County Prosecutor, Chip Conble. We, in probably four months' time, Craig and I put together 24 defendants. And out of those, three were proof that the landlord, the tenant, he knew exactly what was going on there. And that was quite a burden of proof to do. But we were able to at least start that process with the prosecutor notifying these landlords that we're not going to stay in there.
I know it all takes resources, but if you, I would assume if you could have a database and it says, oh, in the past five years, you know, we've had six arrests at these places. It's small enough that everyone would probably, the local PD would say, oh, you know, we're back again. But, but if you, you know, once sometimes you put those numbers in front of you, you're like, wow, it's a bigger problem than I thought.
Right, and that's what we did collectively with the residents on Sugar Street, on consultant news. Sheriff's office and we needed some buys. Sheriff's office took those cases, we had four overdoses at that same residence. And I just had enough and made the public prosecutor say, okay, we do. Craig was happy enough to give up those buys for the greater good and got the ORS on the house. She just actually got sentenced last week to six years.
Thank you for being here. I'm a local township, Bert's, if we can, you know how many townships we got around town, as part of you. Is there any way you can come to invite township meetings, train trustees, and red shit attendants from all townships? To walk along the road, I love roads. I'll tell you what, I love, I love all the roads and, well, you know, I probably find all the roads and stuff. Instead of picking them up, you just mow them over and you don't know what it is. So we were told you that it's all, is there any way that we could come out to, or you could come out to these township meetings? Get them all, walk along, walk along, I mean, these guys are on roads all the time. What better, what a better place, you know, than to be? You can tell them what to do and stuff like that.
Yeah, we've actually done a couple of presentations with our departments and such. I don't know if you did any township meetings or not, but I'm certain we can adjust schedules and do what we need to do to get those, are on, you know, what to go for. Because, yeah, that's a blessing. You know, I see the Boy Scout troop going up, stay around 95, picking up trash. Takes one bottle, not pick up right away.
Now, we did a white one.
Right. I would say coordinate with the sheriff from outlining areas. If he goes to some township meetings, he would, that's not an issue. Can you schedule a time we can do the presentation?
We want to be sensitive to the time, it is eight o'clock, we have one final question. But so that we take that, and I know these options will be around afterwards if we see people want to talk to them, we talk specifics. So if you have an chance to ask a question, is there someone you'd like to, if not an actual person individually?
Thank you, Tom. In my opinion, this is a strong beginning for where we want to end up. Thank you all for coming. We encourage you to come back on Thursday evening when we're going to talk about crime prevention, crime trends, neighborhood watch programs and community safety. Again, we have these meetings often and we don't get a real good turnout. I think tonight's encouraging for all of us and we'll be looking forward to seeing you out here on Thursday evening. Detectives, thank you very much. My assistant tells me that we are going to have bike patrol outside, some opportunities. And so if you come at 5:45, hopefully the weather will be as good as it is this evening. And so if you come at 5:45, hopefully, the weather will be as good as it is this evening. The meeting officially will start at 6:30. Thank you again. We look forward to seeing you.